As we start our meeting today, our first item is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is a means of expediting routine matters which come before the commission for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-debatable motion. If any commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first order of business on the regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to poll two items from the consent agenda specifically in regards to real property. I'd like to poll account number eight, seven, three, three, four, two, and account number zero, three, five, four, nine, zero, five, and that could be the first item on our regular agenda.
Very good. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I make a second that we approve the consent agenda with the exceptions as outlined by Commissioner Radstrom.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Our consent agenda has passed and our first item is the two items mentioned, both requests for property tax abatement applications.
So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we deny those requests and requested if they would like to provide additional information, that's fine, but this time I make a motion that we deny their requests.
We have a motion to deny the two requests for property tax abatement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Our first item is consideration of purchase request, Mark Blanch, but we have Kim Hayfon here because Mark is somewhere on vacation, he told me.
Yeah, I'm a cheap imitation of the original.
Where is Mark? He told me he's going someplace fun, I thought.
I don't know where he's gone, but he's gone. Okay, Commissioners, we have a number of purchase orders today that need your approval. The first one is from the attorney's office. It is for an annual license and maintenance. On your PO, I think you see an account number twenty-eight dash something. Brock and I had a bit of a crossed our wires a bit. We really thought this was a JRI PO. It's not. This is an annual maintenance agreement for his office, so that account will be a ten general fund attorneys when we actually pay that.
So there was a ten that got crossed out, so it's going back into that one?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. The next ones, there's four, I believe, for the convention tourism office. The first one is, this is to the State of Utah Office, Utah Office of Tourism, Film, and Global Branding. Joyce goes on junkets with some State of Utah people and we actually reimburse, they pay for what all that they do there, and we reimburse some with that. This PO is for eleven thousand seven hundred dollars.
I'm not sure I'm gonna feel comfortable voting on a junket.
Yeah, I'm sure it's all pleasure and no business, but obviously, you know this works because of all people coming to Zion National Park.
Well, that is true.
State of Utah transmission, though?
Yeah, right, yeah, great mission, right. The next one is for Zion Events LLP. This is for the contribution event funding for the Zion Canyon Music Festival. That's fifteen thousand dollars. The next one is to Dixie State University for Doc Utah sponsorship, also for fifteen thousand dollars.
I've got a question on the Zion Events LLP. If we could back up on that. Is that a 501(c)(3) group or is that a for-profit group?
Don't know. I know it was voted on by the tab board, approved by the tab board, so I assume they did the legwork on knowing where that was going.
I don't believe they are a non-profit. On this one, when it came, I reached out to Dan Snit, who's the mayor of Springdale, and asked him about it. He recommended, but I do think it is a for-profit one on that one.
If it's a for-profit, I would act, I would move to strike that one, but I guess we'll do that in motion.
Okay. The fourth one is to publishing. This is a Utah Office of Tourism Co-Op Funds Project. This purchase order is for a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, of which seventy-three thousand will be reimbursed to us. Eighty-three thousand is our portion of that one. Okay, the next one is for emergency services. This is a hazmat elite command package. I don't know all the ins and outs of that. It's for Pete downstairs. It's part of the state homeland security project. We get grants every year that pays for that. Obviously, when it comes out of the twenty-eight with Pete, that's always grant funded essentially. I've got a couple here for the road department. The first one.
Pete, here for just a sec. Pete, is this for hazmat?
It's a hazmat IP for the regional fast course.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, the next couple are for the road department. The first one is for Ken Betries Distributing, and this is to fill a fuel tank. That is for twenty thousand, four eighty-eight, seventy-four. And the second one is for PKS Road Oil, and this was for shipping projects. And that was for eleven thousand, six ninety-seven, fifty. I've got two for sports and recreation. The first one is for our contribution sponsorship of the World Horseshoe Tournament that was here a couple of weeks ago, for a couple of weeks, and that one is for fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-three cents. The next one is our sponsorship of the National Junior College Softball Tournament that comes here every May, or has come for a while every May. That's twenty thousand dollars. And the last one is for the road department, and this is for weeds, excuse me, it's for the weed department, and these are all chemicals, Roundup, and that type of things. All of these were budgeted items in each of those departments.
Commissioner Cox, just as Mr. Hayfon was finishing that.
I know Kim will do.
Yes, Kim was finishing that. I looked up Zion's Events LLP on the Utah Business Entity Registration page. They are a domestic limited liability partnership, so they're a for-profit entity.
I would respectfully ask that we remove that, and I'd like to schedule up time where we can come up with some policy and guideline on how we grant these funds to for-profit entities. Not that I'm entirely opposed to it, but we should know how that impacts visitorship in Washington County and how it promotes the intent of the tax money that we're giving out, and I'm just not comfortable with that right now. So my motion would be to approve all of the purchase orders except the Zion Canyon LLP.
Zion's Event.
Okay. I didn't bring that up in front of me, but I can get it.
Awesome. I'll go ahead and second that. Just request that we kind of do resolve this because I think some of these events, like this one, is coming up in maybe a month or two, and so we just need to give them direction quicker than sooner.
Very good. So as far as the purchase request, we have a motion to approve all of them except the one item that's been polled, and we have a second on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Our next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Senior Core Program. Joni Lyman, it's good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you. Thanks for letting me come, too. So, my name's Joni Lyman. I just thought it would be fun kind of tell you guys all together and whoever else is listening, a little bit about our program and what we're doing in Washington County. So, in your package, you have a copy of this. So, just to tell you a little bit about our program, I'm gonna start kind of on the bottom there, but our program was designed for lower-income seniors to earn a little extra money every month. Most of my volunteers earn about, their stipends about two hundred dollars extra a month on top of their social security because all of our volunteers are lower income. So, they earn two dollars and sixty-five cents an hour. I know that's big bucks, but they have to serve at least fifteen hours a week, which is quite a bit for a senior. They have to be, this just goes in and out.
Put that mic closer to your mouth.
There you go, okay.
Stay there all the time.
Okay, all our volunteers are fifty-five or older. So we have two programs. We have the Senior Companion Program, and those seniors go to the other seniors' homes. They go and take them shopping or to doctor's appointments. Some of them just go visit, sit with their family members while their loved one gets out for a few hours. Foster grandparents go to the schools and help the kids with their reading or math skills. So, they're two great programs. We have something for everybody, seniors or kids. On the back, it kind of tells you a little bit about how many hours we're providing and a little bit about the cost. So, Senior Companions, we have thirteen Senior Companions in Washington County, and they serve about sixty-one clients. I just kind of average these. They all do about five or six clients each a week. They travel about fifty-seven thousand, five hundred miles a year, which is quite a bit, just around town. They don't take them anywhere else. So, foster grandparents, they serve about two thousand hours a month, all our foster grandparents, and they, there is nine of those in Washington County. They're in Leverkin, Hurrican, Horizon, Crimson View Heritage, Sunset, and Santa Clara Elementary Schools. So we get around. We'd love to have more. I'm only funded for just maybe a couple more, so we're doing really good on our volunteers. So, I just want to kind of give you a rundown and tell you thanks for your support, thanks for coming to our recognition. Commissioner Radstrom, that was really nice of you, and thanks just for being supportive of our programs. We appreciate it. Do you have any questions or anything about our, what we do?
I think that's super, the service that you're providing to these schools and giving these kids a chance to work with and mentor somebody that probably the age of their grandparents but has a lot of life wisdom and knowledge that can be communicated.
Yeah, it's a really good match. They love them, the kids love them, and they love them back. And the thing with being a foster grandparent is, I tell them, you don't have to discipline. It's just like for parents, you just send it back to the teacher if they're not good. So, it's a really good, really good matchup there, so.
It's a great program. No, thank you.
If you ever have any questions or anything, let me know. I'm happy to talk about my programs anytime, anytime. And I brought you a pencil.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Toni.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Give Zach a blue one.
I'm the University of Utah fan, so we need to change, there we go.
Fantastic.
You won't want a blue pencil come next, on Sunday, by the way.
Probably won't, probably won't. I think the odds are stacked against us. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you. Our next item, item three, we're going to make a motion to close commission meeting and open a public hearing. A public hearing regarding Washington County Budget Update, Fund Twenty-Five Tourism, Fund Twenty-Eight Grants and Endowment, and Fund Thirty-Five Flood Damage, and so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we close for right now the regular commission meeting and open a public hearing for the purpose of opening the two thousand seventeen budget of Washington County to update Fund Twenty-Five, Fund Twenty-Eight, Fund Thirty-Five, those funds. I'll second that as my motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. We're now in public hearing, and our esteemed Kim Hayfon is going to come to the podium, and we'd like all the public to get ready with their comments as well. With their tomatoes.
I'll just start off and just kind of tell you where we're headed with these. In Fund Twenty-Five, a few weeks ago, the commission approved some money for the town of Springdale to enhance the visitors' experience there as they go into Zion National Park. We're adjusting the Fund Twenty-Five Tourism Budget to accommodate that payment to Springdale. In the Twenty-Eight Fund Grants and Endowments, this is the JRI information. There are three sources of funding with that, the JRI Grant, Local Authority Match, and some money contributed by the county as well, so that we're opening Twenty-Eight to accommodate those employees being hired and that function starting here. And then the Thirty-Five Fund is the Flood Damage Fund, and that is to accommodate three NRCS projects. I think two of those actually were probably two thousand sixteen's that weren't completed then, and then additional project that we have that I think you'll approve a bit later on with Virgin. So, there was actually no budget for Fund Thirty-Five for the year. This is all new with the projects that have been completed in Ivans and Hilldale, and now the one in progress in Virgin. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer those, and if you don't, we're good to go.
So the amount we're requesting is that the twenty-five percent match or this full amount of the project?
At this point, we don't know the full amount of the project. This is our best guess on what our, the money essentially is coming from NRCS. We're matching with Rock and those kind of things, but this money is what is coming from NRCS.
Very good.
Any other questions? I didn't, nope.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? I guess you'll lose your chance because we're gonna close public hearing if you don't hurry and jump up, so. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion to close our public hearing and reconvene the commission meeting.
Since you opened, I'll close it. How's that? So I'll make a motion to, that we close the public hearing and reconvene as, reconvene the commission meeting.
Aye, second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing and reconvene the commission meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. Item four, consideration of first amended mutual aid agreement between Washington County and the cities, towns, and special service districts located within the county for additional law enforcement.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Do we need a motion to approve your, the budget? Can you, would you approve the?
Yes, so.
But we have to do that out of the hearing.
Out of public hearing. You're right. Thank you. So, what we really need is a motion to accept the changes to the county budget that have been recommended in the Fund Twenty-Eight, Fund Thirty-Five, and Fund Twenty-Five.
Sounds like a good motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we make the recommended changes to Fund Thirty-Five for NRCS flood control projects, Fund Twenty-Eight Grant and Endowment Fund for the Justice Reinvestment Act expenses, and Fund Twenty-Five for the tourism office, and that's to cover the funding for Springdale.
Very good.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you, Kim. Appreciate you. And so we're on to item four.
So, since you've already introduced it, I'll go ahead and take it. So, this agreement was actually put together when Mr. Commissioner Cox was in the emergency services, and basically it's just a local agreement that says that if there's an area or a city or a fire district that needs additional resources or help, that we will mutually agree to come and help them out, essentially. It's been, already been used a couple of times. I know in the Hilldale flood event, this was used in our fire, Pine Valley, it was used. It helps control funding and some legal aspects of it, and it's worked very well the last ten years, so we're essentially just renewing that for another ten years, and so I would recommend it to the commission that we reauthorize for another ten years. And the county's kind of taking the lead on this, and so if we approve it, then the, and speaking with the cities, they say, well, if the county approves it, then we'll follow through with it, but we'd be the first entity to do that.
I noticed the sheriff and emergency manager Pete Coleman are here. Do you have any comments or anything you want to share on this? I think it served the county very well, but.
No, it's really a great asset to have is to be able to have that agreement already in place. When we did have the fires, as well as the flooding and stuff, reaching out and having drawn those extra resources and having those agreements in place really just saves us some kind of paperwork at the time that we've done other things to deal with and support it.
I'd like to say it's something that we do by nature in this county, except for this helps us understand, once the dust has settled, kind of how we divide the things up and.
Well, I really like Commissioner Radstrom's explanation, and so I would make a motion to approve the first amended mutual aid agreement between Washington County and the cities and towns and special service districts located within the county for additional law enforcement and other emergencies. I don't think it's tied strictly to law enforcement, is it?
No. It's all issues. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Item five, consideration of resolution R-2017-2227, a resolution of Washington County lifting the fire restrictions proposed by the state forester and adopted by Washington County. Pete Coleman? Guess we are getting to that time of year, even though it is fairly warm out there and still awful dry.
It wasn't dry yesterday afternoon in some places.
Yeah, on my side of the county, it was still dry, but anyway.
Yeah, we had a pretty good storm last night over in St. George and Ivans, Santa Clara area. The, each year we go through basically the same thing. We have a good crop of weeds grow up. The state gets with us and sets fire restrictions in order to protect us, and as we do that and as we publish what's going on, we see a reduction in human-caused fires. We've been very fortunate in Washington County for the last several years in keeping those human-caused fires down, which then helps us control the ones that happen naturally with lightning strikes. We're starting to see now the moisture comeback, the temperatures are cooling a little bit, and normally this time of the year, the natural fires begin to start to wane, and so it's normal. The state's made the recommendation to remove those, and it would be probably appropriate to do that about this time.
Thank you.
Now, this doesn't rescind the closed, state's closed burning system or timeframe, which goes till October thirty-first, and those wanting to burn would need to make sure they follow the permitting process in order to legally do that.
Very good. And, yeah, we should congratulate our citizens on not, on being smart and helping us avoid fires. Unfortunately, well, I won't say anything about Brian Head, but anyway, we do appreciate our citizens.
It's not our town.
Exactly. That's my point.
I visited with Ron Wilson, who is over the fire response for forestry fire and state lands in the southern part of the state, and he told me that the Brian Head Fire, as the numbers have all come together on that, it's a thirty-eight million dollar event, and so I am especially thankful for our residents and for Mother Nature and everything else being as cooperative as they were with us this year because of a whole lot of fuel.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to support the resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two twenty-seven, resolution lifting the fire restrictions proposed by the state forester and adopted by the Washington County. And again, making the comment that Pete did, we're still in the closed fire season. If anybody wants to build a fire, they still need to have a fire permit that has to be approved by the State of Utah until the end of October.
Yep. I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Item six, consideration of resolution R-2017-2228, a resolution approving Justice Web Lease Agreement between Journal Technology, Inc. and Washington County. Eric, are you going to speak to this?
Yeah, I can speak to this.
It's fairly simple, I think.
Yeah, so this is just the contract that goes with the item that you guys approved as an expenditure earlier. This is part of the county, attorneys try and use less and less paper, and we're getting much and much better on that. I was in court last week and watched a prosecutor rather than walk in with a rolling box full of files, he walked in with some files in his hand for his day in court. So, this just is a program that goes with our other programs we're using to facilitate that.
Very good. It's good to have technology when it works.
And this one's gonna work, right?
And this is hopefully gonna work.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would go ahead with that explanation, make a motion that we approve resolution number R-2017-2228, a resolution approving Justice Web Lease Agreement between Journal Technologies, Inc. and Washington County.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Speaking of technology, I want to congratulate my two fellow commissioners. Look, they have just these little gadgets here, and I still have just a string of papers.
I was gonna point out, I've got two pages, three, and a tablet, and on down the way, Commissioner?
Me and Kim Hayfon are holding out for just a little longer. Thank you. Item seven, consideration of resolution R-2017-2229, a resolution authorizing the Washington County Treasurer to adjust taxes, penalties, and interest under special circumstances. And who do we have here speaking for that? Renda. Oh. I saw Dave Whitehead pop his head in, and I thought he said somebody, and I wasn't sure if he changed on us, but.
He was here this morning, but had to go to a meeting.
Thank you, Renda, for being here.
Thanks. Yeah, we, this is.
Point that mic right at your mouth.
This is more or less just formalizing the policy that's been in place for the last few years. It saves, the amount of adjustments will save us postage and manpower and really works best for the county.
Can you summarize what that is? Is that if the air is less than two dollars, five dollars?
Five dollars.
Then, whether it's short or over five dollars, we bring it.
Just short. We won't take credits away from people. It'll just adjust the tax down a little bit.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay.
With that explanation, I would make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two twenty-nine, a resolution authorizing the Washington County Treasurer to adjust taxes, penalties, and interest under special circumstances.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you, Renda. Appreciate you. Item eight, consideration of resolution R-2017-2230, ratifying the execution of a cooperative agreement between the town of Virgin and Washington County to provide financial assistance through NRCS to implement recovery measures to protect life and/or property in Washington County, Utah. Ron Whitehead, thank you.
What would you like to know about it?
Tell us a little about the project, where it's at.
This is the last of our flood projects we're working on right now, so keep your fingers crossed and don't anybody pray for large amounts of rain right now. This is in the town of Virgin. It's right off the main highway going through Virgin, runs for about a block up through there. There's some large culverts that flooded through there and took out some infrastructure or near some infrastructure, so we're gonna go in and do some rock grip wrap channeling to take the water out of those culverts and away from that infrastructure and get it back down to the highway culverts. Should be a fairly short contract, and they're mobilizing now, so this is just in time.
And so the twenty-five percent match, Virgin is responsible, they're contracting with the county, and that'll be covered with donation in kind with Rock, or how is that gonna work out?
Yes, we require all the communities we do work in to sign an agreement with the county that's very similar to the agreement the county signs with NRCS. Basically says they're responsible for twenty-five percent of the funds to do these projects, and if they can't, if we can't meet the match for any reason, we've been instructed to stop, go back to the community and have them look it over before we do that. So far, we haven't had that problem. We've been very fortunate. We've been able to meet our match. I can't tell you exact numbers, but we've probably not put in very much match in, close to seventy million dollars we've spent over the past decade doing these.
I mean, NRCS, they have really been good to our county, maybe because we have so many floods in our county, but they've done a lot, and this just shows how much that they've really taken, I don't know, an interest is the right word, but really have stepped up to help us out on a lot of these things, so. And Ron, you've done a great job for working and coordinating this work, because I know one of the reasons why they want to work with our county is because what Ron and Todd have done to help coordinate that work, it's made it easy for them to work in our county, so they should be recognized too on these. So, with. So with that, I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve resolution number R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two thirty, uh, a ratifying the execution of a cooperative agreement between the town of Virgin and Washington County to provide financial assistance through N, NRCS to implement recovery measures to protect life and/or property in Washington County, Utah.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Item nine, consideration of resolution R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two twenty-three, thirty-one, a resolution approving an easement between Hurricane City and Washington County for the construction of and maintenance of a power line on county property. And, uh, we have Dave Emley here to talk to us about it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, uh, my name is Dave Emley. I'm gonna follow the rules of State Department of Energy. I'm with Hurricane City Power, the power director there. And, uh, as everyone knows, the, the county is growing great guns right now. And, uh, Hurricane City works with, uh, all the other power, power entities in the county to, to make sure we have enough capacity, energy, power capacity to serve all the growth. Uh, I'm sure everyone's aware of the Purgatory Flats substation that Rocky Mountain Power will be constructing, starting probably within the next couple of months. Currently Hurricane has one transmission line that comes all the way from St. George over to Hurricane. We're at the end of the ditch and currently we, we are running our generation just for voltage support. So the Purgatory Flats is extremely important to us because Hurricane will get two transmission lines out of that Purgatory Flats and eventually we'll have three with increased voltage, uh, down the road. I'll, I'll get this trick mic worked out eventually. And so, uh, part of the plan is to bring this, one of the transmission lines across SR nine. I got a little pointer here. So the plan, currently we have a transmission line that comes to our, let's see, I get my bearings here, our Hurricane City Anacline Substation. Our plan is to bring the transmission line across SR nine down to this location and hook into a current existing Hurricane City distribution line. This will be the start of our tran, second transmission line into Hurricane. And to accomplish this, we need to have an easement from the county in this area. But right now we have it set up as three individual poles, but we're probably gonna go with one in, one single pole, self-supporting. It'd make it a little cleaner. Um, I'm before the, the commission today to ask for that easement.
Very good. Well, thank you.
We sure appreciate all that, uh, the city does to, uh, work with the county and to, uh, support its residents as well with, uh, stable utilities. It's very, very important.
It's a tough job to keep up on, on the growth, make sure the lives stay on.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a resolution in support of resolution R two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two thirty-one, a resolution approving an easement between Hurricane City and Washington County for the construction and maintenance, uh, maintenance of power lines on county property.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
And if I, I may just want to compliment on the staff you have here. Very helpful.
Oh, thank you.
First time I've been before the commission and they, they've held my hand all the way through, so I just wanna appreciate that.
Well, no, thank you for coming and explaining that. Thank you. Item ten is consideration of resolution R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two thirty-two, resolution creating court support services to ensure treatment for substance abuse or mental health or criminal, for, it says two criminal defendants, so four, two, but anyway. Our, uh, county attorney, Eric Charmaine.
Brock.
Brock. What did I just say? Eric? Oh, sorry. I apologize. Eric's boss, Brock Valnapp.
Thank you, Commissioners. And this is Charmaine Gull, who is the new program manager for Court Support Services, which we're very excited and pleased to be kicking off with, um, a lot of support and help from the Commissioners. Just by way of background, about, about two years ago, the state legislature passed a law that they called the Justice Reinvestment Initiative. And the idea behind that law was to shift the focus from incarcerating drug offenders into getting them treatment. And the law has been rolled out over the past couple of years. And last year, the legislature appropriated some money that could be used by local counties to establish their programs to try to implement this idea. And the idea is that if you give people specifically tailored treatment to their, uh, particular needs, then you can reduce recidivism and you don't waste money by having people sitting in jail, not getting treatment, and then reoffending. So the county, with a great deal of leadership and, uh, energy brought by Charmaine Gull, put together a plan to create this new agency. And we had lots of collaborative partners, including the Sheriff's Office, Southwest Mental Health, local mental health providers, the, and, and the Washington County Commissioners. So, uh, the state awarded Washington County a grant of almost four hundred thousand dollars. And the county has pledged an additional two hundred thousand dollars to get us up and going. Our target date to open the eight new Court Support Services Agency is September twenty-fifth, and we're well underway to get that started. Our hope is that it's going to make a very positive difference to individuals who are charged with, uh, drug-related offenses or any offenses that may have drug addiction components or mental health issues to help people get specific treatment that will help them as opposed to just having them sit idly in the jails. Charmaine, would you like to introduce yourself or say anything about the program? We're, we're thrilled with having Charmaine as our program manager. She's a very dynamic, uh, committed individual who brings lots of experience to this program. And if we're going to have success, it will be in great part due to Charmaine's efforts.
Com- Commissioners and Chair, I'm Charmaine Gull. I'm the Washington County Court Support Services Program Manager. Um, when we were approached, uh, to the commission, it was after we had heard what the legislative general session was gonna bring to the JRI. Um, I had the privilege of working with, uh, Representative Hutchings as well as Representative Snow, realizing that we need to reinvest and not just to take the initiative. So we were grateful for their contribution and the support that the county has provided for this, knowing that these individuals are gonna be coming into the community with or without our help. We heard the challenges that it faced when it comes to the Department of Corrections and the Sheriff's, APMP, uh, treatment providers, going through the certification process as well as the courts, um, and the disconnect. So we have been really collaborating very profoundly to make sure that we have all agencies on board, to make sure this is effective. Um, I can't say how passionate I am about this. Uh, I believe in the JRI. I know that it is possible, uh, to expand and give more opportunities. And I thank the county and the Commissioners to support that.
Thank you, Charmaine.
So this program is a two-year pilot program. The state has told us that they will, um, the grant will last for two years. And we're hoping to have some real data about how successful it may or may not be as we try to implement these JRI principles over the next couple of years.
So I think Brock's office and Brock in particular, along with the sheriff should be commended because the, the Utah State Legislature did change the laws, but Brock has taken it to the implementation part of it, which is the hardest part in my opinion. And the system that he's got provided, I, if, if this is gonna be a success, I think the model that he's come up with will be the example for the rest of the state. And so I, I know we're, we're having to contribute funds that we didn't plan on at the first of the year, but I think this is the only way that we can fulfill the legislature's intent of what they want. And, and it's through their, Brock's leadership that we're getting to this point.
I totally concur. And the, the one red flag I see in all of this is it's based on, on really building this into a successful program. It's going to take a commitment to fund it. And a lot of that is coming from the Utah State Legislature. And so I hope that, uh, under this capable leadership, we're able to demonstrate some really irrefutable results that will demonstrate, uh, the value of what we're doing. And the state will step up and continue its commitment to support it moving forward.
Yeah. Yeah, I just have to echo what's already been said, Brock. I just really appreciate you and Charmaine and your leadership on this. I mean, I sit on the Southwest Behavioral Health Board and, and I also very closely associated with Utah Association of Counties. And as JRA rolled, rolled out, there wasn't a clear plan on how to implement it. It was a great idea, but no plan. And, and I think that, um, what's great about what we're doing here today is, is you're bringing a plan to this idea. And I mean, we're, we're seeing this pandemic of addiction spreading through our community. And, and there's very few families that aren't directly touched with it. And if, if they aren't directly touched, then their, their neighbors and others are struggling with it. And we have to find a better way. And, um, I, I just see this as, as a great opportunity for Washington County, once again, to show not only state leadership, but I, I believe this is, this is a national conversation, national debate. And I believe that we have an opportunity even to show on a national level, you know, that communities coming together and working can, can find solutions for extremely difficult problems. So thank you again. Appreciate it.
The only thing I'm concerned about is you're, you're taking away Corey Pulser's job security, if it's successful. I don't know if you're concerned about that or. So with that joke, and I hope people realize it was a joke, um, I would make a motion that we approve resolution number R dash two thousand seventeen, two-two-three-two, a resolution creating the Washington County Attorney's Office Court Support Services Division to ensure the treatment of substance abuse or mental health to criminal defendants.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank both of you very, very much. Thank you.
I'm excited to see what happens.
Item eleven, consideration of resolution R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two thirty-three, a resolution approving the execution of a contract between Feller Enterprises LLC and Washington County to provide flood rehabilitation services for Virgin, the Sierra Bella Park Project.
This is the contractor that was awarded the low bid on the contract we just approved with Virgin. Uh, this contractor we've used on several of our projects. And Zach mentioned how good NRCS has been to us. Part of the reason we've done so well with these projects is we have a good group of contractors that have bid on these projects. They've been very good to work with the county and help where they could. So we owe a lot to them on this. Feller has done a good job with us and he'll do a good job on this one too.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Ron. Uh, I'm honored we've worked with, uh, Feller Enterprises on a lot of these NRCS projects and they work well. I assume they were the low bid? Were they, were they low bid on it? Okay. So I'd make a motion in support of resolution R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two thirty-three, a resolution approving the execution of a contract between Feller Enterprises LLC and Washington County to provide flood rehabilitation services for the Virgin Sierra Bella Park Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you, Ron. Stay right there, because we have, uh, item number twelve, consideration of resolution R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two thirty-four, a resolution approving an application to the Bureau, US Bureau of Land Management to transfer, for the transfer of land to Washington County for a public shooting range. And, um.
This public shooting range is one we're working on currently with the BLM and the city of Santa Clara to provide a, a small shooting range over in the south hills below Santa Clara that will move all the shooters into a confined area instead of having them scatter out across the hills where there's bike riders and other people out enjoying some of that river reserve park over there, so.
So this is approving an application for, uh, recreation, public purpose, um.
RP.
RP and P application with BLM for this, so.
And, and to submit a check for a hundred dollars for the fee too.
Yeah.
I, I'd just like to add a couple of things on this. So the site we selected, we did actually hire a consultant that came in and looked at actually the ballistics of it, because I, I know we've had some problems other places, but, uh, the experts have come in, specifically looked at the type of bullets that would be shot out in this area and how they would be confined. And so after the consultant's opinion and gave us some feedback, this would be an excellent site for the ballistics part of it. Um, and then also, I know we, we, we sometimes have a, a difficult time. Sometimes the BLM can be difficult to work with. But I will say on this application, the BLM has been very, very helpful. They, they went out and actually located the site. They're, they're working with us on some endangered species issues out there. And, and so I, I'd just like to publicly thank the BLM for working with us on this one so much.
Uh, yeah, this, this is really a public safety issue because, uh, the public certainly enjoys their Second Amendment rights and, and going out on public lands and shooting. But, uh, for years and years, we've been advertising for people to come down and recreate on our public lands. And they ride four-wheelers and bicycles and things like that. And I've had, uh, several people come to me with concerns that they've heard bullets whizzing by them as they've been out there. And so providing a safe venue where we can encourage people to come and, and shoot safely, I think is, is a real win for the county because, uh, both of those activities are, uh, activities that we're in full support of. And so, uh, I'd make a motion to support, uh, resolution R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two thirty-four, a resolution approving an application to the US Bureau of Land Management for the transfer of land to Washington County for a public shooting range.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Commissioner Cox is correct. It's quite unsettling to hear that, uh, zoo. Start looking around. Item thirteen, consideration of resolution, uh, R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two thirty-five, a resolution approving the execution of an agreement between the Utah Division of Wildlife Resources, DWR, and Washington County to provide funding for the South, the Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park, which is, um, a more mature, um, we've had it longer, but it's the, kind of a similar plan as what we just voted for, so RP and P property.
The Division of Wildlife Resources has money available to them, collected from taxes. And that money can be spent for improvement of ranges, uh, other things that will encourage the public to hunt and fish on public lands. And we applied for a grant. Took us a couple of years working with them to get them to stop looking over us. They found out we were serious and they have awarded us that grant and we're ready to sign an agreement with them and put that money to good use installing an eight-inch water line down through the shooting sports park to provide water for culinary and convenience down there that we haven't had.
Very good.
So, um, I think this is great to get water out there, so I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve resolution number R dash two thousand seventeen dash two-two-three-five, a resolution approving the execution of agreement between the Utah Division of Wildlife Resources and the Utah County to provide funding for the Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Item fourteen is, uh, very closely related. It's a consideration of resolution R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two thirty-six, a resolution approving the execution of a contract between Progressive Contracting Incorporated in Washington County to construct the water line near the Legacy Park and Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park in Purgatory Valley.
Todd's gonna address this, but before I sit down, if you would like to donate this microphone that Public Works, I will take it downstairs and make sure you get a better one up here to replace it.
Thank you.
Uh, this is directly related to what Ron was just talking about, the grant money. Uh, we did bid the project. Uh, we got three local bidders. And, uh, Progressive Contracting was the low bidder. And so we're asking that you award that contract for a total of, uh, three hundred eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-five cents.
Very good.
It's my turn?
Okay.
Okay.
Is it your turn?
I can't remember. I'll go ahead and do it. Um, I approve, I'd make a motion that we approve resolution number R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two thirty-six, a resolution approving the execution of a contract between Progressive Contracting, Inc. in Washington County to construct a water line near the Legacy and the Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park in Purgatory Valley.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Item fifteen, Commissioners' report. Item fifteen, Commissioners' report. Any, uh, fun and exciting things to report back?
I don't have any.
I don't have any business. I, I can comment that, uh, I was able to, uh, along with our risk manager, we participated in a Utah County Indemnity Pool, uh, risk management training that I thought was outstanding and, uh, very educational.
It is good training. I always, uh, joke around that when I get through at the risk management conferences, I come back and wanna shut down the county jail because there seems to be an awful lot of risk involved with running a county jail. But anyway, that's just a side comment, Sheriff. But I don't know if they talked about county jails there, but anyway. Well, with that, uh, we will stand adjourned. We appreciate everybody's attendance and participation.